Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Thank you. We'll go on to agenda item number two as an invocation. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? After which we will have the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Carl Pettit from the First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we just want to come to you today and say thank you first of all for all that you've provided and all you've done. We thank you for this great moisture and what that means to our region here as well. Father, tonight, as we prepare for this meeting, we pray for wisdom and discernment in decisions that have to be made. Pray for calm hearts and calm minds and God, we just pray that your will will be done. Continue to provide and protect and care for this valley, this great city. And God, may we honor you in everything we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, now maybe we'll get it going right now. Agenda item number three-
You look for a couple of meetings and you forget?
I know, I forgot the whole process. Agenda item number three, consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the special meeting of December 5, 2016. B, treasurer's report. Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report for November showing cash and investments as of November 30, 2016. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joyce Groshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city, tonight in presenting the treasurer's report for the month of November 2016. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 85 percent of the city's monies totaling $31,312,909. Total long-term investments represent 15 percent of the city's monies totaling $5,367,871. Total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments are $36,680,780. This amount is down $788,433 for the month of November. On the next page of the report, I list some key cash receipts for the month. Police grants, equipment reimbursement, $8,998. Airport grant, $15,553. Cable franchise fees, $60,255. This amount is down 5.41 percent from fiscal year '15, which was $63,703. Transit grant federal, $118,509. And the remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for the month. Page three of the report, I have provided information on your trust funds. Your total cash and cash equivalents for the month totaling $1,186,49. Total long-term investments total $4,972,004 for a total cash, cash equivalent, and long-term investment of $6,158,053. Total cash receipts for the month are $46,952. Total cash disbursements, $60,465 for a net change in long-term investments of a negative $136,953 for an overall reported decrease of $150,466 for the month. Page four of the report, we report on the cash ending balances for all funds and I note here that the general fund is at $3,834,083 for the end of the month. Page five of the report is discussion and analysis and this is provided for your review. And then on the last page of the report, we give you a five-year trend on all cash balances for all funds. And again, I note that the general fund is at $3,834,083. This is the highest month in the, or the highest point in the past five years. Next month will be our lowest reporting point for tax-supported funds due to the fact that we don't receive our property taxes until January and that is our largest revenue source for our tax-supported funds. And then also to note, back in 2014, in the month of December when we reported, we were at a negative $810,537 and in 2015, we brought that back up to $113,106. And through the process of the past couple of years, we've been working on budget restructure meetings and a new approach to spending and through this process, we've been rebuilding our reserves, which was a needed item. And that's why you're seeing this as the highest trend point. And then the other two remaining negative amounts in the funds that are presented, one is covered by transfers from the operating fund and the other one is grant reimbursements for our community development block grant. So this shows a very positive, strong cash report for the month.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Move to agenda item C, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Shannon Ansley and Carl Blazer to continue their service as members of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Both terms will begin January 1, 2017 and will expire January 1, 2020. D, Construction Board of Appeals and Review reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Ted Booth to continue his service as a member of the Construction Board of Appeals and Review. Mr. Booth's term will begin December 31, 2016 and will expire December 31, 2018. E, Human Relations Advisory Committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Nancy Goodman to continue her service as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Ms. Goodman's term will begin December 19, 2016 and will expire December 19, 2020. F, Sister City Committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Johnny Kettner to continue his service as a member of the Japanese Sister Cities Subcommittee. Mr. Kettner's term will begin January 7, 2017 and will expire January 7, 2020. G, MOU with Idaho Department of Transportation Police. Council may wish to approve a memorandum of understanding MOU with the Idaho Department, Idaho Transportation Department, ITD, to allow the Pocatello Police Department to participate in ITD's 2017 Traffic Mobilization Program. ITD will reimburse the city for overtime spent on traffic enforcement and provide funding for traffic safety equipment. The police department has participated in this service under an MOU for several years and mobilization are an important part of the department's traffic safety program. H, 2016 Road and Street Financial Report. Council may wish to approve the 2016 Road and Street Financial Report. The report accounts for the city's use of state highway user dollars during the past fiscal year to the Idaho State Controller as required by state law. I, Resolution, Revised Comprehensive Planned Land Use Map. Council may wish to adopt a resolution approving, amending the land use map component of the comprehensive plan of the city, expanding the urban service boundary north and east of Satterfield Drive and east of Chubbick Road as presented at the October 20, 2016 city council meeting. J, Addendum to Collective Bargaining Agreement Fraternal Order of Police. Council may wish to approve an addendum to the fiscal year 2016-17 Collective Bargaining Agreement, CBA, for the Fortuna Valley Fraternal Order of Police, Local Lodge Number 13. Correcting an error within the Personnel Administration Rules which were attached to the CBA, the physical fitness test will be required as a post offer qualifying step. The said language is now accurately reflected within the revised Personnel Administration Rules attached to the addendum. K, Council Decision, Southcliff's First Edition Final Platte. Council may wish to adopt its decision, approving, its decision approved, the final plat of the Southcliff's First Edition, which divides 15.62 acres into four commercial lots. Zone Commercial General subject to conditions. The proposed subdivision is located between South Fifth Avenue and Interstate 15. The proposed lots will have frontage on public dedicated rights of way.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Jim, or by Councilman Johnston and a second by Council President Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item four, Communications and Proclamations. We have at least one scout, possibly two scouts. No? Man alive, they get, they look younger and younger all the time, don't they? Could you stand up, tell us where you're from, what troop you're in and-
On our slides, there's supposed to be four of me.
You're the only one that's gonna get credit for coming.
Yeah. So I'm from troop 315. I'm supported by the Catholic Church and I don't remember the name of the church.
St. Anthony.
Boys' Church Catholic.
St. Anthony.
St. Anthony.
Welcome.
And I'm here for my communications badge, so that's exactly my ears.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here with us tonight. I apologize, I didn't mean to offend you. He's at the age that he wants to make sure everybody knows he's older than that, so I apologize. We'll move to agenda item five, Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On January 5, at 6:00 PM will be a regular council meeting. January 12, at 9:00 AM will be a study session. December 17, Parks and Recreation Holiday Hoopla Free Throw Contest at 2:00 PM at Dick's Sporting Goods. 12 Days of Making at Marshall Public Library continues through December 30th, 3:30 to 4:30 PM each weekday, excludes December 24, 25, and 26, when the library is closed. City offices will be closed December 26 to observe the Christmas holiday. Garbage and recycling pickups will remain on schedule. December 26 through the 30th, special pickup for Christmas overflow bags or boxes of extra holiday wrapping will be picked up the same day as a scheduled pickup. December 28 through January 10, Christmas tree collection sites. Boxes will be provided at City Hall, Rainy Park, South Arthur, Rainy Park on South Arthur, and Sister City Park entrance on Pocatello Creek Road for Christmas tree disposal. Trees will be chipped and used as landscape projects. Be sure to remove all strings, wires, and other objects to avoid damaging the city's wood chipping equipment. City offices will be closed January 2 to observe the New Year's Day holiday. Garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. Did I miss?
Did you announce number 12 was pulled?
I have a birthday.
And number 12 on our agenda has been pulled from the agenda and so that has, that has been pulled. Council, did I miss anything other than that? Mike has a birthday sometime coming up, it sounds like so. Alrighty. Thank you. Then we will move on to agenda item number six. Agenda item six is a public hearing, 2017 Proposed Program of Projects and Grand Application for Transit. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public regarding the proposed projects for public transportation for fiscal year 2017. If approved, council may wish to authorize city officials to sign and execute related contracts and grant documents. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is the annual program of projects that's been published for public comment. It was published in the Idaho State Journal on November the 30th and again on December the 10th. You have those specific tables before you. I would be happy to entertain any questions specifically on those line items. I would like to mention that the execution of these projects is dependent upon the confirmation of these federal grant awards, also upon the, upon legal review as always, and of course the requisite local match. And in the case of the capital projects, you may remember that we did not entertain capital projects in this year's budget. Those will be subject to budget amendment should we have sufficient match and meet all of those criteria. Are there any questions, the council?
Questions, council? No? Dave, have you received any written correspondence?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me see, where am I? Okay, we would ask for any of those with testimony supporting the application. Any with testimony of those uncommitted to the application. Any testimony of those opposed to the application. Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, how do you wish, how do you wish to proceed? Councilman Bray.
Mayor, I move that we approve the projects and grant applications for transit, that we authorize all appropriate city officials to sign and execute related contracts and grant documents subject to legal review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bray and a second by Councilman Moore. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Public Hearing Program Years 2015 and 16, CDBG Action Plan Amendments. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public regarding proposed amendments to the program years, year 2015 and 2016 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plans. The amendments were reviewed and recommended for approval by the CDBG Advisory Committee at their meeting on November 15, 2016. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to approve the amendments and authorize their submission, including any public comments, to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Melanie Giggly. I'm the Division Manager for Neighborhood and Community Services. As described by the mayor, this is the public oral comment period for these two proposed amendments. The amendment to program year 2015 would move some funding from an existing activity of demolishing blighted structures or on properties that we acquire for infill housing from demolition to the acquisition activity. We've been very fortunate in not having a lot of requirements where we had, there are a lot of lots where we needed the demolition money, so this will make a better use of the funds remaining in those two line items. The 2016 amendment would add some funds to the Bannock Youth Foundation project, which was to make some repairs to the interior of a covered access ramp. The repairs were necessitated by a roof leak there, which has been repaired, but they've been unable to fund the repairs of the interior. The bids came in far higher than we anticipated. They may come back in lower, but with these funds, we would be prepared to meet the bid we did get. There are sufficient funds in the city's rehab activity that we should be able to cover this very easily. Copies of this recommendation have been available at the Marshall Library, Neighborworks Pocatello, Life Incorporated, the Housing Authority, and here at City Hall, as well as on the website for interested parties to review. The 30-day comment period began Wednesday, November 16, and concluded today. No written comments have been received. And following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to accept or amend the committee's recommendation and authorize the amendment's submission to HUD. That's everything I have for you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council?
I got, okay. For clarification, for anybody that's home and watching this, access and roof to where?
Within their Family Resource Center of Bannock Youth Foundation over on Hayes and Fremont. They have to get people in the building and the front of the building-
So it's an entrance?
Pardon me?
It's an entrance?
It's an entrance, yes.
To, to the building-
To the building.
Which houses Bannock Youth Foundation?
Which houses part of what their operations, yes.
Okay. Two or three sentences, because government tends to be fairly robust in diversity in departments. What is the Bannock Youth Foundation?
Bannock Youth Foundation is a nonprofit here in town that works with homeless youth and they operate some housing for homeless youth and for kids who have aged out of the foster system up to about age 21. They provide some transitional housing for them and some services to help get them on their feet and into the world.
And they've been doing it for a long time?
A very, very long time, yes.
Thank you.
Beth?
Any other questions from there? And you did mention there were no written correspondence.
No written correspondence.
Thank you. And we would look for any testimony of those supporting the application, any testimony of those uncommitted to the application, any of the testimony of those opposed to the application. Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this items before you, how do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the amendments and authorize their submission to HUD.
Subject to legal department review?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Public Hearing Proposed Program Year 2017 CDBG Annual Action Plan. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public on the proposed Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2017 Annual Action Plan. The CDBG Advisory Committee recently completed its annual grant application process, concluding with the recommendation of approval at their meeting on November 15, 2016. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to endorse or modify the advisory committee's recommendation and authorize submission, including any public comment of the action plan, to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all requisite contract documents subject to legal department review with HUD and any sub-receipients or subcontractors. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening again, Melanie Giggly, Division Manager for Neighborhood and Community Services. This upcoming year is Pocatello's 21st year as an entitlement community. This action plan is built assuming the same allocation of the current year, which is $375,419, but the actual amount will not be determined until after federal budget action. The CDBG Committee has recommended a list of conditions that should cover any adjustments in that amount, up to about 25 percent either way, without coming back through a public, formal public hearing process, and those are in your packets as well. We spent a great deal of time over, from September on, taking a look at these and making sure that they all met HUD's requirements as well as the requirements of our local consolidated plan. The memo in your packet outlines those recommendations and it's shown in the green spending column. To allow funding of all of the sub-recipient projects, the committee recommended reducing the city's sidewalk reconstruction program. It will allow all sub-receipients to receive what they requested depending on final funding allocation. I believe this is a well-balanced spending plan and staff is really happy to be able to serve all of the sub-receipients that requested funding. Copies of these recommendations were provided to the potential sub-receipients and have been available at the Marshall Library, Neighborworks Pocatello, Life, Inc., Housing Authority, and here at City Hall, as well as on the website for interested parties. A 30-day comment period began Wednesday, November 16, and concluded today. No written comments have been received. And as the mayor stated following tonight's hearing, you may wish to authorize submission of the action plan to HUD and then the mayor's signature on any related required contracts. That completes my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Thank you. We would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this items before you, how do you wish to proceed? Councilman Moore.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the plan, authorize you to sign with legal department review, sign the contracts, and submit those to HUD.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, Short Platte, Super Vista Subdivision. Mark Brown of MBA Construction and Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying have submitted an application to subdivide approximately 0.60 acres into three lots located north of East Center and east of Vista Drive. This is a replat of Lot 4, Block 1, Vista Medical Subdivision. Staff recommends approval with conditions outlined on the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've moved to approve, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Orr. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number 10, Short Platte, Brighton Subdivision. Doris Ann and William L. Brighton and Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying have submitted an application to subdivide approximately 0.45 acres into two lots located at 412 McKinley Avenue. Staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Final Platte, Quinn Road Townhouse's First Edition. Nathan and Amos Arnold, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted an application for Quinn Road Townhouse's First Edition to commence. This final plat was originally approved by council in August 2008. Due to the collapse of the economy, the plat and construction ceased. The subject, the subject plat and construction drawings are the same as was originally approved. Therefore, staff recommends that the plat commence as originally approved. Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve this recommendation that the plat commences as originally approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. As a reminder, 12 was pulled, so we'll move on to agenda item 13, Agreement for Long-Range Transit Plan, BTPO. Council may wish to approve a corporate agreement with Bannock Transportation Planning Organization, BTPO, to upgrade the long-range transit master plan as required by the Federal Transportation Administration. The proposed agreement delineates their responsibility and provides terms and timelines. There is no city match for their cooperative agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Maintenance Easement and Agreement to Granite Bench Donation Placement Near 233 North Main Street. Council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on a maintenance easement and agreement for the placement of a solid granite bench near the city-owned refurbished Chief Theater Sign and Mosaic on Seringo Wireless's property located at 233 North Main Street. The bench is a donation to the city from the Highland and Pocatello High School classes of 1971. The city will be responsible for placement, maintenance, and repair of the bench. Councilman Adamson?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize your signature on the maintenance easement and the agreement for the bench.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion by Adamson and a second by Orr. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, Rainy Park Parking Lot Agreement, Pocatello Community Charter School. Council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on a temporary agreement for use and maintenance of Rainy Park Parking Lot area with the Pocatello Community Charter School. The charter school utilizes the parking area for the benefit of their teachers, parents, and guests. And with said use, there is ongoing maintenance to the gravel lot area. Since it- the charter school's annual budget is already set for fiscal year, the temporary agreement will provide an understanding for the parties until the annual agreement and payment can be budgeted beginning July 1, 2017. Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve this temporary agreement with the charter school.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Brown. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Resolution Portniff River Vision Study. Council may wish to consider a resolution approving the Portniff River Vision Study and declaring its intent to have the city of Pocatello spearhead implementation as funding and other resources allow.
Could we have Hannah respond to a couple of questions, please?
Absolutely, we can. I bet she was really looking forward to it.
Hannah, it appears that there's an overwhelming support for this visioning study. What are people saying they expect the city to do money-wise?
Great question. Thanks for letting me come up here and talk to you. Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Division Manager and Project Manager for the vision study. The community wants to see things happen. So that I have heard is that this is not a plan that they want to see sit on the shelf. So they are looking for action, and those who have been more involved want to see action happen sooner. Many people do not want action after they have died, so that has come up quite a lot.
Would they give us some money when they die?
We...
Would they?
Yeah, I know, but that would have been a good question.
We're going to be able to create money.
And I'm not sure if I answered your question, so ask just...
Well, some people expect the city to do everything, and that's not our role, I don't think. We cannot be all things to all people. So this looks like a very major expense.
This is.
So how do the people want this funded?
So the vision study, the proposal, is that the city lead implementation, and that's what you are adopting today, is that the city is going to lead implementation as funding and other resources allow. It's going to mean a lot of grant writing. There's a couple ways things can be funded. We can shake the trees around town, and we will... That is probably how the first projects are going to be funded. They're going to have to be small enough that local fundraising and some small grant writing can fund them. Further down the line, you know, some of those projects that are in the concrete channel are going to require significantly more funds than some bake sales are going to allow. And so a couple options for that is, again, grant writing, but there's not a lot of grants out there. There's economic development funds, there's bonds, and that's going to require community support. So no community support, they're not going to happen. No money, they don't happen.
I'm not sure that I detected in looking at this that we have a priority of projects.
That is going to be the first task of the advisory group, is to come up with, hey, this is where we should start. Now, the vision study document does list about a half dozen short-term priority projects. So a canoe trail, really cheap, a couple thousand dollars, it's pretty well-funded. Get something from Pocatello down to Simplot, easy to do. Other projects that are short-term priority is a project at Centennial Rainey Park. You were just talking about that area with the charter school project, setting back the levee while there. Maybe that's a half million dollars. I'm picking a number, but potentially fundable. So some signage projects, so some other short-term projects. Those ones rose to the top. And then there are priority projects long-term. A big popular one with the community is within the concrete channel. One is at Raymond Park to set the levee, set the concrete channels while it's back there. Two, also at Memorial Park. And three, a big one that rose to the top, is to sort of work with Old Town Pocatello and get economic development along the river. Have your cafe tables along the river, your San Antonio on the Portnife, so to speak. That was the community's most popular pick, and so it is in the list of priority projects. We didn't rank them. We just said, hey, these are a chunk that should be a priority, and left that for the next phase. Obviously, if city resources are to be expended, we'll be back to you to say, hey, is this a project that the city wants to go forward and applying for grants on and spending time implementing.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Hannah while she's up?
I do.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm just, I'm looking at this proposed resolution, and there is indication here as far as financial resources as funding and other resources allow. And so that would just be as we put it in the budget?
As you put it in the budget, if you want to have the street department or the water department spend their time on something, or the parks department, that would be, but it would be part of the budget process.
Okay, so that is in number two. In number three, it talks about implementation of the ad hoc advisory committee and to allocate necessary staff resources to coordinate and manage implementation of the vision study. That seems to me more direct than as funding and other resources allow. Are we committing ourselves with this resolution that hell or high water?
No. This is non-binding. So the next month, you can say, no. You are giving direction, and so you are saying this is where we want to go. But, you know, is the ad hoc committee going to be what we have forever? Is that appropriate? We're going to have to figure that out as this moves forward. So this is a non-binding resolution in terms of not, it doesn't commit future councils to anything, but it does give me a staff direction, it gives the mayor direction that we're all on the same page moving forward, and this is where we want to go. We're going to have to reevaluate what the city can commit, how much time staff can commit, how much of a priority this is, and certainly as council and mayors and staff change, that will ebb and flow and the community, as community interest changes too. And I'm, but the community wants to see action, so I also don't want to say, oh, the community is going to let you go, that they're, they want to see action. So this was the recommendation of how to make action happen.
How much of your time is basically going to be committed to this?
So currently, Mike Jablowski, Public Works Director, and I spoke, and think 20 percent of my time, and see how that works, see is that feasible for me to complete my other duties, see what's needed, is this getting done, and come back to you in the budget process with how that works. But that seems a fair amount to start with, so, you know, one day a week. It fits with many of my other responsibilities with stormwater, so there's a lot, there's a significant amount of overlap. So I feel that, for the most part, I'm doing what I'm responsible for doing with managing a stormwater permit in doing that 20 percent. So it's not like an added burden on my time.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion case, a statement?
I think it's real important to distinguish between a resolution and ordinance or a contract. I heard it once explained, it's kind of like looking at a ham and eggs breakfast. The chicken was involved, but the pig was committed. And this, we're being involved in this right now. We're not being committed to it. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to look down the road a little ways and see where this goes, because there will be some commitment required.
Yes. That is a good point. We'll be back for the ham.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the chicken. I mean resolution.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion by Moore and a second by Adamson. And before we vote, I do want to make a statement that may or may not embarrass Hannah, but first of all, I want to thank the committee that worked on this. We had a committee of 30 people, 30 citizens on this committee, that when they would meet once a month for...
Every other month.
Every other month, that meeting was like an eight-hour meeting. It was not something they got together and threw ideas out and went. They really truly hashed this out. And then Hannah spearheaded the whole project of making sure that we had arguably the best community outreach that we've ever had in Pocatello. It was incredible with separate meetings. I don't know how many public meetings that she had, but Hannah, I publicly, on behalf of the city council, would like to thank you for your work, and please extend to the committee a big thank you for that as well, because they spent a lot of time, a lot of effort. I really think it's a great plan, and you just did an incredible job. So thank you very much for all that you did on this. With that, Connie, would you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17, Professional Services Agreement Clearwater Geoscience LLP. Council may wish to approve a contract agreement for professional services between the city and Clearwater Geoscience LLP for the development of a new planned municipal drinking water well. The agreement is a time and materials contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $19,856. Funds are available in the Water Department fiscal year 2017 budget. Councilman Bray?
I move that we approve this professional services agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, Water Department Equipment Bid. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bids received on January 22, 2016, for the following equipment to be used by the Water Department, subject to legal department review. Bids are: A, one 2017 half-ton 4x4 regular cab pickup from Smith Chevrolet in the amount of $23,980.05. B, two 2017 half-ton extended cab pickups from Herning GMC in the amount of $27,009.05 per vehicle for a total of $54,018.10. C, one 2017 one-ton 4x4 regular cab chassis pickup from Smith Chevrolet in the amount of $27,635. D, one 2017 10 cubic yard dump truck from Kensworth Sales in the amount of $140,334.05. And E, one 2017 forklift from Arnold Machinery Company in the amount of $28,329. Total price for all vehicles' equipment is $274,269.296. Funds are available in the Water Department's fiscal year 2017 budget. Councilman Moore?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the bids in items A through E, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Moore and a second by Orr. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 19, EMS Patient Care Reporting System Contract Fire. Council may wish to approve a contract with ESO Healthcare Connected in the amount of $22,455 for a new emergency medical patient care reporting system, EPCR. The system currently used by the fire department via Bannock County Ambulance District will no longer support state and federal requirements, creating a necessary necessity to change the current EPCR. Funds are available in the ambulance fund 2017 fiscal year budget.
Mayor? Councilman Orr? I would move that we approve the contract system, the EMS contract system, subject to the amendment of the mayor's reading.
Second. What?
Well, you amended that in the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
You changed it to ambulance.
Thank you. Okay, I was thinking, okay, what did I read wrong there? No, I've done that a number of times. We, in the 19, it comes from the fire department, but that was, it's supposed to be the fire ambulance fund, and so thank you for that. And we do have a motion by Orr and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Ford?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 20, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes set aside for this, three minutes per speaker. We'll go ahead and get started, Idaho Lorax.
Idaho Lorax, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho. Greetings for the holiday season. I hope you have a very nice holiday season. I look forward for a very collaborative, cooperative year coming up as we bring health, safety, and betterment to our community. So with that, hopefully you'll support the copy talk as you learn about it, and, because I hate to send it elsewhere. I like things to stay here when I create projects with people. So have a happy holiday. Glad to see you. Maybe I'll run into one of these many parties I've been at or so, but anyways, thank you. Have a good year.
Thank you very much, Idaho. With that, he is the only one on the list to speak, and so thank you very much for attending. We are adjourned.